7:09, this time I will call a meeting to order and ask if everyone would rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and to those that have joined us, hi to this necker at CBC. We have Dixon, we have. Yes, see where the others are. Can you tell them? Welcome to the other others that have joined us online. Would you like to identify yourselves, please?
It's Amanda Ford in at the 490. It's Amanda on one of the lines. It's 604901284.
Thank you, Amanda. And the two 709?
Me, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Glad to have you. So we have all the selectmen here tonight. Thank you very much for attending. I'm going to ask at this time for public comment, and I believe that we have one request.
Arlene Fiano, I'm here.
Could you come a little closer so it picks up on the mic?
I'm here to discuss what was our event, our reenactment event we had scheduled for our bicentennial, and that was postponed due to COVID. That was then postponed again due to COVID. That has now been postponed once again due to Steve Gardner, who is now unable to follow through on the planning part of the reenactors. I have since been in contact with Patrick Carroll, who is from the regiment Urban A, Orbenee, and they are a group of reenactors who are willing and extremely excited to be asked to help organize an event that will showcase the Washington Rochambeau route, and they specialize in programs that educate the public in Rochambeau's role in the Revolutionary War. So with the mission, I have to back up. We also have funding from the National Park Service, which needs to be used for an event. So this will be funded with those monies, but I'm coming to you for permission to move the date once again to 2023 and to begin working with a new group of event organizers.
And you're looking at October or end of September?
Um, to be determined. Once we talk to them, their their schedule is such that once we get, I get the okay from you, they can zoom in a couple of days notice, or they can meet in person with us on site with a week's, week and a half notice. So.
So you you're looking for fall, late summer fall?
I think so.
Okay.
Only because that coincides with the mowing of the field.
Right.
And I know that Lenny was extremely concerned about that. I don't know how time.
Same difference. One of the things.
So the dates have always revolved around the payoffs. So.
More so than your than your availability, so.
Correct.
Yeah, because this looks, they have a different type of harvesting, which is a lot quicker. So it's it's not as critical as the other type. We had a three-day dry period and all that.
All right, then I would ask for a motion.
I I would move that we allow there to go forward with the reenactors, the new group of reenactors to put forth a program for the town in 2023, hopefully, and with a little guidance from above, no COVID, no nothing, it will happen.
I need a second. I need I need a second.
I'll say.
Mike, Adam, do you have a comment?
No.
Bob Petro, do you have a comment, sir?
No.
Thank you. Then I will ask for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All then we have a unanimous motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll make it.
Ria, would you?
Make it a good one.
Yeah, absolutely. Ria, would you like to speak?
No, I'm just here with Arlene for her support.
Very good, and thank you for all your efforts, both of you. I know this is a labor of love, and the entire commission has been extremely supportive. Please thank the rest of them for this evening's attendance.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask that we have an agenda addition. At this point, we have number four under appointments and resignations. We have none this evening, so I would ask that we put in addition, and I would need a motion to amend the agenda to ask for, to have Jeff Scala, who is chairman of the Temporary Building Commission, speak this evening for about 20 minutes for his request. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Bob DePetro, and I second.
Yep.
Mike, very good. Are there any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye also, and I presume Bob does too. I can't see him, but I guess he does. So I will say that it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll ju- jump right into the minutes, and I would take a motion to accept all three at the same time, and we can discuss them individually and pull them out if we have to. But Adam, you want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Sure, we can accept the minutes. May 3rd.
May 11th, May 23rd?
May 11th, May 23rd.
Thank you. And a second? Michael, are you ready? Any questions, additions, revisions, repair?
Excellent job.
Thank you. All right, all right. Adam, did you have any corrections or additions?
No.
Second go around? No? All right, very good. Then I will ask for a motion to approve, three at once. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we're on to number four, and we'd ask for the Temporary Building Commission Chairman, Jeff Scala, please. You need some paper to.
Anybody want to mask? Okay, I had forwarded two solicitations. One was for a design build team solicitation, and the other was for. Well, doesn't matter. Another one was for professional engineering architectural services to support the commission and our efforts. And the professional engineering architectural services, one is really, we're looking for an expert or some kind of professional to help us develop design build technical proposal, or whoever is shortlisted, their teams and design build teams. And we are asking the board of selectmen to review these two documents. And unless there's substantial changes to it, just to work with the town and completely get them out as soon as possible. Happy to help when anything you need to at this point.
Looked them over. Tried to look them over today, but that was a pretty, I believe, fistful. It does require some serious examination, so.
And then there was, I did forward it, I did forward an email as well via.
I think we included that.
Yeah.
And it was a bunch of things that we'd like, you know, needs to be considered. You know, this is probably something you might want to pass. That's it. Passed by the town attorney, you guys, how much, there's a bunch of blanks in the documents that reference the duration. How long the town typically uses for this this kind of solicitations. Where do you want to post it for the official information? The thing is set up right now as, posted somewhere on a website, but I think Mark perfected, you need to cast a much wider net than you probably normally cast, because it is very specialized work. Um, let's see, I'll specify the guy here. Who's received questions on the solicitations? Whoever looking at this might have questions for either board selectmen or us.
I would suggest. A question maybe way out left field or there in first placement and just, but on the road, if this town decides it needs to have some kind of police presence, is there any plans that might include a police headquarters to be added to this?
At the site, Bob, that's what you're asking?
Yes.
Is that, is any different question?
Had any discussion, Murphy said adding capabilities, adding the police.
The answer is no. It has not been discussed.
But it but it was in the concept conceptual design that the UConn students did for town hall. Because it it has some very specific requirements. It has to have its own separate entrance, has to have privacy, noiseproof walls. So, so yeah, but it was considered in that, not in the fire department edition, but in the in the conceptual town hall that the UConn students did for us, not this year, but last year.
Does that help you, Bob?
Yes, as long as we don't forget it.
No, and I think too, one of the issues, you have of the, the town hall location, I mean, the firehouse location is, you have a reaching field. It's that that's a limit to what you can put there, its size and everything. That that is one of the the major limiting factors. Anything that has to be designed around that.
That is a constraint.
Yeah.
Unless you want to get into a bigger project.
Yeah, then it gets there. Because right now, it's a limited use because, you know.
Okay.
My flush is a week there.
Thank you. Number seven, so on to number seven.
And then, you know, we thought it was prudent to have a protest period in case, you know, somebody complains. And our question to the, to the committee, to the board is really, is that something you guys are okay with? And is five days for protests, for somebody to file protests, is that enough? We think it's enough because we want to keep this thing moving. And then if somebody does protest, how fast can the town respond to the protest? Either you dismiss it for, you know, it doesn't have any meat behind it, or some other reason.
Is there a reason you have to have a protest? I mean, the protest, the ultimate protest is about no on the project.
Somebody who might potentially be.
Oh, okay.
So we don't, we don't like the way you select.
Yeah. So I think the answer to that question is it depends on what time of year it is, right? Is it during the middle of budget season? You know, is it during the middle of summer? So I, you know, I think that is going to be, excuse me, a factor that we'd have to consider is how rapidly we could respond.
And it depends on the merits of the protest, too. They just don't like.
Oh, yeah. Some some may have some significant legal ramifications that you have to deal with.
I thought, Adam?
We're not required to have a protest period.
Okay.
No.
Haven't done.
I I see it, I see it occasionally in my work, but it's pretty rare. But I do see it occasionally.
I think if you give people a space to protest, won't they take it?
Um, no, protests are kind of rare, even if they are there. They're pretty rare. You'd have to, you'd have to completely screw up the process. They have to know about it.
So it's kind of like, why add that in?
We're happy to scratch it out.
Space for it, if you don't, if you're not required to have it.
Is there, is there comfort by the board then to take that out?
Yep.
Bob Petro?
I mean, it would be another. Yeah.
They're already submitted. And if we don't like their bid, why would we want to invite them?
Um, because on the solicitation of professionals, purely qualification based, so we can use whatever criteria we want to select them. When it comes to time to select the design build team, it's a combination of qualifications, their proposal, and their fee. So if, for some reason, we don't select the lowest fee because we feel we get a better product, somebody say, well, you know, why didn't you pick ours? Ours is lower.
Right.
So there could be the potential of that.
And that happened to us first phase in the sewer project, we had six or seven significant contractors. And when we chose, and the differences had to do with, you have to get into the into the weeds of what they are providing, when they're providing, and, you know, to the whole perspective we sent out. And there, the difference was there. They did challenge it. We met with them and showed, we had our data and showed what the differences was. Tell us the end of that.
Did you have a a protest period?
Seven, I would say years ago. I honestly don't recall. We had.
Did you even, did you even have a timeline?
We did. We did have a timeline. So we must, yeah, we had, we must have had, we must have had, yeah, and I'm thinking somewhere in that range of a few days.
Yeah, we didn't give them a lot of time.
You know, maybe five working days. I think it was, yeah, it was a week. That's five, yeah, five working days. Yeah.
I think we said five business days, so that'd be.
And you can, and you can deal with that in a day or two. I mean, it's just like, these times, it was, they needed an explanation. How come we didn't get it? Because the bids were exceeding a quote, you know, when you're several million dollars and you're, it's like $30,000, $40,000 differential.
Yeah, it's not much. Yeah, so.
But don't you think that this board with, under your guidance, would be clear and open? And once you pick a contractor that delineate why you did?
Yes. That's, I mean, in the solicitations, we even put a scoring mechanism in there, so it's based on points.
And that was, yeah, that was the only time. So after that, never had an issue. So.
So would the board like to, at this time, take number seven out?
I, I have no support.
I have two that would like to take it out. Adam?
If it's not required, I don't think you need it.
Bob Petro?
Oh, good.
Go with that. Okay, number seven. Moving on to number eight.
Um, we have a non collusion statement, and it's, I see it very typically in, you know, government type contracting, and that's really, I, I don't know what the town uses, if you use anything at all. Yeah, it's basically saying, hey, we're not going to, thank you, thank you, and the, you know, and make deals in the bathroom, and, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to collude with our, you know, to any competition and that kind of thing. That's kind of general gist of the thing. But I don't know what the town uses, if you use anything at all.
We haven't had enough experience. We really have to do a lot of that, but it's it's a pretty standard boilerplate thing that we see.
Yeah.
In a lot of contracts.
I didn't create, I didn't create the whole movie in my own.
Understood.
It, it doesn't harm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that seems to be a comfort level with number eight. Nine?
I don't know what the town insurance requirements are.
Yeah, see?
Number 10?
Um, rightly brought it up, this, you know, people are going to be signing these solicitations, and what's the, what's the signer's authority to sign on behalf of the team or the company? So to really get in with a corporate resolution, saying, okay, Jeff Scala is vice president, he's allowed to sign contracts for us.
You know, the.
Yeah, they should supply a.
They should, they should supply a statement, right.
If it's an LLC or it's a corporation, they should supply a court, and that that authorizes.
Really, it really boils down to what the town normally do. It's actually our question. We don't, just don't know.
You know, the last contracts that we did were the high school and the sewer stuff, and I was not part of that process.
You, if you were an individual, it wasn't. If you were a corporation, it was.
It was. Yeah, and that makes sense.
That was pretty much it.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go back to the topic. Let's go back and ask you this question, Jeff. He answers to these questions tonight. Um, which ones do you need answers to tonight?
We left, is the board, we left it, unless you guys are making substantial changes, we just felt that either I or somebody from your board worked with the town staff, they believe, that's a change substantial. I don't, you know, we take the protest period, change.
So kind of what I heard was that, correct me if I'm wrong, that the board probably needs a little more time to review the documents. And if if that's in fact the case, my suggestion would be that the facilities and public safety subcommittee meet, go over it, and then make a recommendation to the board, and move forward from there.
And we're happy to, I'm happy to help out, you know.
That's probably.
Somebody needs explanations of why we put what we put in there.
And that, yeah, and on the subcommittee, basically, that's the one item there, so.
Right, you focus on just that.
Into the weeds of this thing.
Yeah.
And I, I, I am not the speed reader. I got to go on through this today.
There's, there's substantially the same, but the wording does change depending on what we're looking for.
Well, that's it. And I'm thinking, wait a minute. You know, I just.
So what is your availability? Are you available sometimes during the day for a meeting?
But I run a 20-man term. I can be here whenever I want. I got people for that.
You got people.
Well, I'll say, I don't have my people.
I can make myself available.
What we're saying is, yeah, sometimes for us, we're able to coordinate daytime.
I could, I could work on a couple of days' notice. I can usually work it out.
Jim has made long hours, so we try to bring his questions to the daytime.
You know, that's.
So I get tired after nine o'clock. How about you guys?
Well, my wife prefers me home.
Understood, understood. So thank you for this presentation this evening and the questions, and we will come up with a meeting time as our action plan within another couple of weeks, and see if we can get a daytime, maybe?
Was the school project designed? No.
The question was, was a school project designed built?
I'm just wondering, did they have an IFRP for professional courses?
Yeah, it's back there in those filing cabinets. It's just a matter of figuring out where it is. But yes, we could certainly pull that out as reference material.
That would be second cabinet over from the doorway, third drawer down.
Well done, well done. And is it, is it the tan one?
Tan? Yes, yes, it is.
They developed the design build.
There's a question, there's a question. The commission, we don't have the expertise to be able to find specifically what we want for the fire. We have general guidance, and we need a professional to help us say, okay, codes need to be this. Based on what the town desires, you need this much space for a fire truck. You need this much space between the fire and the new wall for changing areas. You know, here's the, here's the upgrades you want to do on interior, the side, interior of the building, reference to existing boiler, even though it's new, may not be big enough, additional space. So we need somebody with that capability to help us.
To set up the design build.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
So at the end of the day, you're going to need, you know, probably an architect, an engineer, maybe a mechanical engineer, maybe an electrical engineer, and that's the idea behind a design build team.
Right, right. The team.
You'll have, right.
Somebody to help arc this, the building commission.
Define.
Define what we want the design build team to do. Right. The design build team would put the polishing, the technical details to mechanical systems, the plumbing systems, the fire protection systems in the building, and all of the defense mechanical systems. Find what we need, what we need. Okay. Yeah.
Think you get an accurate bid.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, probably, probably one of the most complicated pieces of it is going to be the fact that you're marrying an existing building to a new building, and you've got truss, a truss structure.
Yes.
For the roof, and that's going to be probably one of the most complex design pieces.
You know, and the design build team could come in and say, hey, you know, we're not even going to try to save it. We're just going to rip the thing off down to the top of the block and put a whole new roof structure on, but that would be a bit of them. You know, the definitions we want to.
They may just say that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. They're going to, they're going to look at it from an architect, you know, because the architect's going to come up with a scheme, and the structural engineer is going to say, okay, how can I, can I salvage this? And the team is going to decide what's the cheapest for them to build. Right.
There are some problems with the building, the spalling brick, and truss moves for the, the big crack that's developing in the ceiling.
You know, that's, that's part of, that's part of what we're going to develop, too, is what we want to do as maintenance, because the bridge still has original UConn.
But it doesn't have the original.
We have.
I believe so many times it was original.
Hang on to that thought.
Well, no, because when.
We can get into this at another.
All right, I just, for information purposes, when the timberline shingles, the recall, I believe the firehouse was done.
I think it was.
Back in the early 90s, or early 2000s, late 90s, early 2000s, I think.
Obviously, you're still at 22-ish.
Yeah, yeah, still getting close.
We have chief with us, and he would like to be recognized.
Saying no.
No, we're all set. Okay.
No, I'll always say something. I think you'll know that, but Bobby, easy, take it easy. Thank you very much for the acknowledgement that I'm here. To Jeff's point, you know, looking at different things and what Michael's talking about, you know, deterioration of the building, keep in mind in your cap of a plan, you have a replacement of the roof of the firehouse. Whether it was done in 2000, whatever, there's a lot of money put into the roof that could go, as Jeff was mentioning, towards, towards the construction. Also, Jeff, you want to keep in mind another thing I found the other day, as I've walked majority of the selectmen through the building, and the superintendent of Parks Department, Bill Ingronzer, underneath the vent fan on the gear wall, where we've got the rescue truck, we've got a big fan up there, two of them on the side, coming down about three or four bricks, we've got three or four courses of bricks that are now starting to deteriorate because water must be getting in there, too. So there's some other factors. I won't get into what we need, etc., now to prolong the meeting. I think that'd be a fair, for a safety meeting discussion. But thank you very much for acknowledging.
This, this, that's another reason why I'm looking for a professional.
Makes sense.
Okay, good. Um, we're striking, we're striking out a section of this thing. Do you guys want a new copy of it? Or are you just going to ignore that section?
We'll just draw a line for them.
Yeah, that's easier than.
You guys want PDF or Word documents?
You sent it to Kathy, right?
Why did I send it as a Word document? I don't remember where I sent it.
I don't know what it is. I just, I just read it online.
I believe, I believe you sent it as a PDF, but I can make it a Word document if we need to, I believe.
I'll send it original.
Okay.
Very good.
I have nothing else, unless you guys have.
Thank you, Jeff.
No, thank you.
No, thank you much.
Take a slice home for your wife.
You can sit here.
Yeah.
Very good. If you think yourself.
Appreciate your time.
A very special thank you to Jeff Scala, the chairman, and to the commission that he, that works with them and.
Agreed.
And because.
You've known me too long.
This is Joe, this is Joe Man's work, and we're very impressed, very impressed. And thank you for pushing us along.
Keep going. Keep going.
Very good. You want to stay for the rest?
About your special meetings to push this thing along.
You want to stay for the rest?
Thank you, sir. It said we shake it like this before you've been said.
I'm changing perfumes or something. Very good. So we're going to move on to number five then, because I don't believe there's any reason to make motion breaking here. Chief, did you, did you have your hand up again?
I did not. A little me motion. All set. Thank you very much.
Very good. So under reports and updates, we have property and facilities report. I was not able to be at that meeting. It's active, consider on the Bolton Lodge, Freya Park. No parking signs for Wall Street. The background is that GPS is a very funny thing, and it has a mind. Uh, the background is that, um, GPS is a very funny thing, and, um, has a mind and a life of its own uh, for the, um, for the Freya Park when, and that's, that's Bolton notch Freya Park. Uh, when you put in for it, uh, apparently it sends you not to the north, but to the south and sends you to Wall Street. So there's been, uh, a constituent request, uh, for no parking sign, uh, on Wall Street. Uh, and so that was, uh, do I have that correct?
So.
I think, I think, I think they meant no parking for the park.
Right.
Not necessarily no parking on the street.
Yeah, they need is one of those signs that said your GPS is wrong. Across the highway.
This is not, this is not a parking area for, but something to that effect, this is a noti- a notification of.
Direct signal sign?
Yeah, well, something on there, and I'm not quite sure, we really would have to sit down what, as to what we could do on that, but, yeah.
It's just, just to inform people. That people are parking and then walking into the woods or something to think.
People are parking and walking through people's yards and into the woods, that's where it's sending them, they're walking up people's driveways and into the woods.
Well, that's what a no trespassing sign is for. Private property, no trespass.
Yeah.
I, I mean, if we wanted to do something, I think a simple sign that said, no access to.
Yeah.
No access, that I, that, that one I put down, that's, that I would, no access to Frasier Park.
Yeah, but I don't know why that's, that's, because who's gonna enforce the no parking sign, and who's gonna say it's not, you know, somebody who's got a visitor.
No access from this road?
Yeah, no access will tell them that they're in the wrong place, and we won't have to enforce anything, this is nothing can force. An informational sign.
Maybe, maybe you'd want one at the beginning of the street, and I'll put the call aside.
Yeah, right, that's true.
May I have a motion? To.
With the no access to Frasier Park signs, two of them on Wall Street. Wanted to base and wanted to turn around.
Adam, you want a second?
That's fine, second.
Bob, do I comment?
Hey. Hello.
All right.
No.
Sir?
No comment.
Thank you. All right, then I'll, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Bye.
Passes unanimously. Uh, we'll go on to number, um, B, uh, we've heard from residents at fifteen Vernon Road, there's a blind driveway and possibly asking for a possible speed limit sign. We've also heard from people in number eleven, um, talking about the speed is an issue. Jim, do you want to address?
So, w- we have not had the opportunity to go out there and determine if there is in fact a blind driveway there. Um, you know, assuming that there is. You guys, in your esteemed wisdom, have made me the local traffic authority, so, you know, we can certainly put the sign up on the town road based on that.
Posting the speed, is that what you're saying?
No, the, uh, you know, the blind driveway.
Blind driveway.
Um, I mean, there's a process to it, right? I mean, we have to make a determination that it's necessary. You know, then we have to actually go out and mark per call before you dig.
Can we move our, our.
That is one of the things. That's one of the things that we are, actually, it's on our list to think do. Our hydropark department is at fifty. And we've got road milling going on, we've got covert repairs happening on Cook Drive. So we've actually got a couple of things in the queue for them, and that is one of them. Um, and so that, that has actually been an area that we've talked about, Kathy and I actually, well, Kathy without me, because I was in another meeting, uh, met with one of our resident troopers today. Um, and we'll be meeting, we'll be meeting with another one tomorrow, and we talked, we discussed this with, uh, First Selectman Sawyer. They will be doing what we generally do this time of year with school getting out, which is a state safe streets initiative. Where we, you know, give our troopers some overtime to do traffic enforcement. And the things that we've heard this year, the areas that we have a concern are Bolton Center Road, South Road, Vernon Road. Uh, those are all areas that we've heard residents give some concern about, and also, you know, they'll just generally do some, you know, enforced, the targeted enforcement traffic, looking at stop signs and things like that, so that's gonna begin probably here. Which is something that, you know, those of you who've been on the board for a while have been a part of for many years.
So because we, uh, are looking to find out some more information and to get the highway crew back on, uh, I would ask for a motion to table this until the next meeting, and we can.
You can report back.
Report back.
That's a move.
And tabling, any second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, then we go to, uh, five, A C for the seminary cemetery maintenance. Um, this has been an ongoing issue, as you all know, and we, that we have a new landscaper on deck that took a while to get up and running. Uh, and I have spoken with him as well as, uh, visited both cemeteries, and so has Jim and Kathy done visuals. We, um, asked the highway, the town, I'm sorry, the town parks crew to stay on top of the trash bin by the gate, uh, which is now happening, which is great, and we have, um, we're about to review possible signage for design. Um, we have, um, uh, awaiting getting more crew back online, uh, to be able to use the side entrance off of the Saint Maurice parking lot, uh, I've spoken to Father, uh, and we're working on that, working on that issue. To be able to use, to be able to clear the big pile of, um, soil and, uh, whatever else is in that path. And it's going to be removed and placed appropriately at Herrick Park or where the town, uh, uh, crew sees fit and is appropriate. Jim, you want to add to that?
I mean, no, I, I would just say that, you know, it's been an ongoing, uh, thing, we started looking at cemeteries a couple of weeks before Memorial Day to make sure that they were gonna be, um, ready for Memorial Day. Um, one of them was, I'm not sure that the other one ever did get ready before Memorial Day, because I wasn't here to check on it. Uh, I know Kathy had checked, Kathy and I had checked on it on Friday morning. Uh, they said they were gonna come back on Saturday because we were not satisfied with the conditions. Um, we've, we've maintained a, an open communication with G and G Property Services, they've been very responsive, they've heard what we've said, and we, we did, uh, uh, down to the cemetery here at, near the church day, and did a, a tour over there, and the conditions are significantly improved since the first time that their staff did it. We told them what our concerns were, they addressed those concerns. And I think they have a better understanding of what our expectations are, and I know they were mowing at the Quarryville Cemetery today. I have not had a chance to check that today, but, you know, it's, it's on my travels, so, you know, we'll check it, and again, I think, you know, part, part of this is good communication between us and the contractor. And if we maintain those communications, you know, and check it, they'll understand the expectation and carry through, and, and so far, they've been pleasant and they've been responsive.
I would concur with that. We also have town maintenance from the Parks Department, uh, in particularly at Bolton Center Cemetery, uh, where we have a back chain link fence, uh, that is in the form of an L, uh, and another leg, uh, that wraps around private property. Um, and we have had, uh, a horrible infestation of bittersweet, Bob, the petro's favorite plant. Um, the town has one cutting, it needs to, which is now doubled, it's blossoming. Uh, so we need to, um, look at removal, and there is an issue on the leg closest to the, um, Saint Maurice Parish Hall, the Reba Hall, um, where we have uh, growth that is now covering, uh, stone. So, um, we're gonna look into that as we get our strength back in numbers and.
We also have two dead trees there, we're gonna get down.
And in that cemetery, is there one?
Maybe.
At Quarryville, and, um, we, we need to talk to the neighbors there as well, and we're proud to announce that the veterans' flag is up and lit at Quarryville, and so it has been replaced, and, uh, I have reached out to the veteran who was very concerned about that, the nineteen seventy-six um, donation of a flagpole, uh, so that has been in place, and it was in place for Memorial Day, and it was at half-stops, we're very grateful to the town for watching out for that as well. Um, is there any additional?
Nothing I can think of.
The little things to hold the veterans' flags that we talked about.
So that will, can we discuss that?
Yeah.
On, uh, six B.
Okay.
We, we will come to that.
Okay.
Uh, looking at the, well, then we'll move on to the, because there's no action required, uh, be the budget report. Jim, do you want to comment on that?
Again, you know, it's here for your review, I think, if you look at it, you'll find that, you know, we're pretty much on track for where we would expect to be at this point in time of the year. Uh, you know, people are, people are finishing up their spending for the year. But, you know, there are some areas that we are gonna have, you know, funding based on uh, lack of staffing and other things that beyond our control. I'm trying to find it, if there's any questions for me, you're just like really good at finding things in this package. There, there are still quite a few bills that come in this time of year, but, um, we're, we're, we're really, you know, pretty much on target. Anybody have any? I gotta tell you, you know, last year when we were looking at this budget, if you remember, we had a lot of highlighted line. If you think about this year, we've gone through this year's budget, and we've been pretty consistent with our spending. And we haven't had any highlighted lines where the finance department has said, you, you gotta watch this line item. But I think, you know, that's, that's a, um, it's a testament to our department heads, all those that are, um, you know, carefully spending the money that they're entrusted with by the town.
All right, if no further questions, then we'll move on then to budget transfers, number C. I would entertain any questions that, from the documentation that you've got in your packet or on your email?
So there is one budget transfer that we've been asked to remove, but you've already, you already had this, so we did not remove it beforehand. And that was a six hundred and fifty dollar transfer from the fire department. I want to say it was from Communications to Chief, help me out here.
Other ser- other services.
Other services.
What does that mean?
You're all right, Bob? All right, bud.
So one of the things that I do this time of year, when I get transfer requests or significant purchase orders. I talk to the finance.
Okay.
You okay, Bob?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
We just want to make sure you're okay.
We'll continue then.
One of the things that we do when we have time, I mean, there's a couple of transfers that got added to your package today in the supplemental. When we have time, we send it over to finance, look at, to make sure from their perspective that there's enough funding. The, the chief felt that he had the money in there, the finance department thinks he's three hundred, he has three hundred dollars less than he thought he had, so he thought the best thing to do at this point was to, um, just to pull that one. What I'm gonna ask, consider doing, which we, we've done in the past, and just, just have never done it this late in the year before, is to, uh, to grant me the ability to do, uh, transfers for the balance of the fiscal year uh, in amounts not to exceed five thousand dollars. Nope.
Don't make a motion to do it.
We could do that later when we get into. So, so.
Do that.
Yeah, but you guys have been meeting every two weeks for A P, so there really hasn't been a need to, but as we reach the end of the fiscal year.
You're gonna need.
I, I think we need it.
Or do you think you would do it?
That would, we do that under new business.
Sure, the lady of the house, uh, an answer you asked a question about, uh, other services, it's really other supplies would be for water. For food, standby crews, uh, also, uh, awards for the fire department, which are all done, but it, an extra bill came in for water, I think, to put me over. Yep.
Thank you for that clarification. Not a lot of money, but well, there's a moment in time.
You want to make those?
Adam, do you have a question?
I just have a question about the, the transfers, are we talking about the transfers on the budget now?
Yes.
Um, are these all, these transfers for the school bottles? I mean, weren't they budgeted?
SCBA bottles, the chief and I have had some conversation about that, and one of the things he's trying to do is to get, and he's here, so he can jump in if you, if you'd like him to do. Um, so, so we did budget for SCBA bottles for next year. Uh, one of the things that we've asked him to do is to smooth out the peaks and the valleys in the purchasing. And he thought that by leveraging some, it funds that he has available at the end of this fiscal year, he could achieve that a little sooner. And so his thought was to purchase some this year, to purchase some next year, and, you know, to continue with that plan. And he's actually work, you know, working on a document similar to what we created for, um, for the computer replacements that we do here on the town side. So he knows how many bottles he has, he knows what the dates are, what the pressures are, and, you know, so he could generally, you know, create a plan. But Chief, did you have anything, did I miss anything? Is there anything you needed to add to that?
No, I think you said it very eloquently, let me expand on it for Adam's, uh, benefit. Uh, Adam, to go back in two thousand, two thousand nine, the town of Bolton purchased, purchased a ladder truck, a hundred foot ladder truck. Along with that truck, there were six, uh, seven, eight bottles or tanks and bottles, a total of fifteen extra, uh, total bottles that were purchased, and NFPA puts the end of life of those fifteen years, which is next year. In two thousand thirteen, we received a federal grant for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the most important piece of fire apparatus, the SCBA, in bottles totaling thirty-six bottles. And we have a total of fifty-one bottles that have to be replaced before two thousand twenty-eight. In conversation with the, uh, gentleman and the town administrator, spreading that all out, fire department will take a little bit of a hit this year, on this particular fiscal year, to purchase some of those, but with the main goal of spreading out the purchase, instead of buying fifty-one bottles in two thousand twenty-eight, which currently, let me back up, in November, the bottles were eleven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Currently, they're fourteen hundred and fifty dollars, thereabouts, in freight. If we wait until two thousand twenty-eight and buy them all, I'm scared to know what the price is gonna be, but you could be looking at two thousand dollars per bottle. By spreading, as, uh, agreed, spreading the purchase out of five, uh, excuse me, on this average of seven bottles per year through two thousand twenty-eight, the town will definitely save money, uh, on the purchase price of the bottles. Currently, the bottles will ensure the safety of the firefighters with having a number of bottles that are needed to do the emergencies, uh, that arises in the town. And future budgets, I E, I E, two thousand thirty-seven and longer, would continue to have less financial impact, even though we know there's gonna be a price increase by doing it on a rotating basis.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions for Jim or the chief? Are there any other questions then on the budget transfers?
Adam, uh, professionally, does that answer your question, sir?
I think so. I assume that that means that in future years, the budgets go down for these purchases.
Well, they, they, they maintain a level as opposed to getting hit in the face in two thousand twenty-eight with.
With a big giant peak.
Right. Right. We'll, we'll have a consistent line item cost.
Right, that's, that's the idea.
Forever, basically.
Well, uh, I'd like to ask then, because you did get some under grant, uh, monies. Is that, was that just a one-time thing, Chief, or do you expect that, that this could come around again?
Historically, okay, the way grants have been handed out to departments across the country for the SCBA, it's for the complete package. For the Scott Air packs and the bottles, the Scott Air packs themselves are averaging about eighty five to nine thousand dollars a piece now. So a large burden on municipality, the grants are being held out for that. I have not heard of a grant to pay for replacement bottles. Mike, I yield to you, you deal with a gentleman in Boston quite a bit on our new forestry that we got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, no charge for. Any commentary, Mike?
Yeah, it's, Pam, it's the same grant that I submitted this year. The FEMA grant, assistance to firefighters grant, this year we applied for eighty six thousand, I think it was for radios. That was submitted also last year and the year before. Last year, we submitted two grants, because I found out we applied in two categories, so we submitted two last year, got the forestry truck, this year we submitted. A single grant for the radios, we'll find out somewhere around August if we're successful. So we're, we're hitting it every year, looking for grants.
Do you see, do you see bottles as being a part of that in the future year?
You may, we may be making an application in future for complete SCBAs. Because ours will reach a point where they need to be replaced and that, they will come with bottles, but that's the only way I see it happening.
Mr. Mark?
Just a comment that you have to look at this similar to what we, we utilize for our, our computers and everything else. We have them in a, in a periodic cycle of change in. The important thing about doing it with these things, yeah, we, we can get other grants, but there are other needs, large. Expensive needs, one time hits that, that grants better work for you than, than, than something like this, so. You can redirect where you after, where to the grant. And if you have this in process, this is one thing you don't have to worry about, you can worry about something else.
I'm sure that when our air packs, the whole units get old, we'll be applying again, but.
No, 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 take that back, correct that statement, the town will be applying, you'll be applying, Michael and I won't be here. Michael and I will not be here, okay, but to Bob's point. For instance, Adam, tires on the apparatus, okay? NFPA says you will change your tires every seven years. I don't care how many miles are on the truck, there'll be tires changed. Last year, a tire averaged eight hundred and twenty five dollars per tire. On your ladder truck, we've got ten tires on the tanker, there's ten tires on ET, there's six in Rescue, there's six. The nice part about those, all those trucks were not bought the same year. So that would be spaced out and I have been able to absorb moving funds around, being a little creative. Absorb the cost of the tires within our working budget, not having to come back to the selectmen and say we need more money.
Well done, well done. If there are no other further questions, then I will entertain a motion to accept the.
I need to read these into the record quickly.
You have to read them in.
We need a motion first and then have you read them in?
Doesn't matter either way.
May I have a motion first?
Motion to do all the transfers collectively.
And second?
Yeah, I'll second that and. Officer can read them in.
Building and land use, ten thousand for regular payroll, professional technical services. Building and land use, twelve thousand from regular payroll to other payroll. Building and land use, five hundred for supplies, office supplies. Planning and zoning, five hundred from supplies to advertising. ZBA two fifty from supplies to advertising. Seniors, five hundred from other payments to other professional services. Seniors, one twenty five from other payments to supplies. Highway fifteen thousand from tree trimming to gas and diesel. Highway six fifty road repair to catch base and cleaning. Nineteen thousand from professional and technical separation fund. Admin four thousand from professional and technical to furniture. Five twelve professional and technical to other technical services. Admin thirty one hundred from professional and technical to other supplies. Fire commission, one thousand from medical to equipment. Art commission, thirteen fifty from professional education to equipment. Our commission, nine hundred from medical to fire security. Fire commission, twenty nine hundred from other professional services to fire security. Fire commission, twenty eight hundred from payroll to equipment. Tax collector, one thousand seven twenty six from other payroll to printing and binding. Tax collector, three twenty from dues and fees to printing and binding. Tax collector, three forty two twenty two from office and operating supply to printing and binding and that is it, that's what I have.
Thank you for the read and this time I will then, if there are no further questions. Favor of the budget transfer, say aye. It's unanimous, thank you.
Just a point of information. You, you heard the chief talk about how the SCBA cylinders are going up and everything. The fire truck that we ordered last fall or right after the first of the year for eight hundred and ten, I think it was. Is probably in excess of nine hundred thousand now. We, we bought at the right time and it's going up daily.
Plus delivery times are spread out a lot, right now it's three years to get a ladder truck, it's over two years for an engine. We ordered ours and we haven't got the pre-engineering conference yet. But the targeted date is late next springtime, so we definitely, you folks made an excellent decision purchasing what you did.
Thank you, thank you, chief, and we're gonna move on then to item number six, ongoing business. A, you have the canvas ordinance with board, review board information added. So that is six A in your packet. I would entertain questions?
One comment.
Comment?
Yeah, this is just a correction. On that, on that, I think it's at page five. It was, this is made up of all, it still has a ton of wood rich.
Okay, you found one mistake.
I did. That tells you, I, I actually read this thing and I, if you look on it.
Kathy, I don't know if I like this saving paper thing, because I am having a heck of a time finding stuff on the double side.
Five, it's I, I, item S five in that.
How do you do that so fast?
I'm sorry.
You separated out of it.
I see the, I see the hearing officer one, but where's the?
Yep, you're right.
We got it, okay.
Well, this, this was at the town attorney's suggestion that I, we take this hearing procedure and. Adapt it to the town of Bolton.
So we have one correction on F five. Change it to the town Bolton. Are there other additions or corrections, Adam?
I didn't see any, but I. Thoroughly. Why is drafted by the town attorney?
No.
Did it come, it must have come from other town.
It did.
From Woodbridge?
Right, he, he said, he suggested that we use that one.
The format, it, you know, I found it. Readable, logical, in, in, you know, for someone who's had zero. Training or skills in the legal profession, I understood.
Think you're all gonna agree that we've got to go back to public hearing.
Yes.
On the changes that we've made with this.
Yes.
So I don't know that we need to necessarily. Actually, I think that gives you some time to look at it, Adam.
Excuse me, I'd like to interrupt the meeting for just one moment, please, we have a report in from the. Budget vote today, it was three hundred yes and it was unfortunately three hundred and ninety eight no.
Same three hundred.
So we're down from a hundred and twenty down to ninety eight.
Not a very good turn.
No, no.
We meet a thousand pretty much to pass it every time.
So at this point. I would like. Clear my head of that thought. Going back to the procedures, establishment of procedures. One of the things that I find is exceedingly beneficial is to have plain speak. When it is in an ordinance form for the average person who might be concerned and want to take a gander at it and not have to have. Someone from the legal profession. Company excluded to review it and tell them what it says. And I was impressed with the ease of read. So at this point. We. Because we have one member that has not had time to digest it, would there be a comfort level to post this and table this until the next meeting?
That would be fine, but I just, one thing I did catch when I reading this earlier was that. The timeframes are unrealistic for some of the notice periods, because. In my experience lately, certified mail takes more than two weeks and sometimes three weeks. And, and you're giving people time to respond, but. Time. And out, calendar day.
Yeah, we're going back to Pony Express.
Be a problem, so you have to look at that, that, but other than that, there's some things in here that I want to take more.
Great start.
You even get certified mail, I'm finding that with the COVID practices, that the mail, some of the mail carriers are not getting things signed. There's sort of, there's this sort of fake delivery process where you say it was delivered, but it wasn't delivered. Certified mail has become a bit of a nightmare, so.
Kind of like tennis balls.
So at this time then, we will, we reviewed it, we will put it on another agenda item, we do not need to make a motion. We're gonna move on to discussing the veterans' commission. So back in the winter time, we did pass, we were going to create a veterans' commission. So I would like to ask the board for some correction, that, what your thoughts are for the size of such commission. What your thoughts are for makeup of such, of such. And I guess I'd like to ask you to be broad minded on it. I found a very interesting gentleman and a couple who came to speak to me at the Memorial Day. Commemoration and he was. Grew up in Barbados and he served under the UK flag and he was part of the allied forces. And he was very moved by the way we recognized our veterans and he has an interest in veterans' issues. So though he did not serve in the US military. Lives in town, only eight months. We have veterans who have lived in town, some of them their whole lives. And who have expressed an interest in serving. And I have someone who is not a veteran, who is a female, who has expressed an interest. So I would open that for discussion, who would like to start?
I have a thought. You know, you make these things too big, it gets too cumbersome, it's gonna be a five or seven.
I was thinking three or five.
Okay, well, here's, here's my thought of the, the, the seven. If you have seven, you, you have a minimum of four D veterans and then allow. I think you have to have a mix of folks in there. To, to be fair, because there are people who are concerned about veteran, veteran issues who aren't veterans, so they should be a part. So if it's five, then it's three, two, if it's seven, four, three, you have a minimum. On that board. Yeah, five, five is a good functional board. We're an example of that.
And we're changing.
We're changing because we're expanding our scope, but that's another issue, but. That would be, that would be my recommendation and, and, yeah, you have. If it's five, three slots reserved for veterans and the other two for, you know, folks at large who are interested in being, if you go seven. Same, same thing, four, three. So that was, that would be mine, I, I'm not sure.
One of the other things to consider is trying to get a quorum, because it will be a commission, it's not an ad hoc, it'll be a commission.
Well, it'll be established by ordinance, not by chart.
Right.
Good point.
Right.
Yeah, but commissions are established.
Well, some are.
And somebody state law.
I. I don't disagree that we can call out the number of veterans. You know, the minimum number of veterans on, on a commission like that, it seems reasonable. I, I think without necessarily putting it in the ordinance. Would like to see spread of veterans, because I think far more women are serving in the, in the courses in the last two decades than were previously. And there's a real difference between their experience and the experience of either men or men from prior decades.
So one of the things I would also like to have a discussion for, and we don't have to come up with it tonight. But would you please be thinking on what you believe the mission of this commission should be? One of the things that I believe we should be talking about are, are there needs for our veterans in town? Are there needs for our veterans to be recognized? Such as our veterans monuments are missing a number of wars that are not recognized on the, on the. Beautiful green that we have. Already, Mike has addressed the need for the. Flag stanchions for the cemetery stones. We have another veteran who was requested that the small section of road out here that finishes off the triangle. Of, it's not really Bolton Center Road and it's not, it's not Hebron Road, but that'd be called Veterans Way. Very short half, quarter of a block of your city person next to the Tuck Hill House. To have that renamed, those are types of ideas that we can place before this commission. And also, I think it's something that we can ask them to look for grants, if there is something that they feel is, and there's a need for something in town. For our veterans that they can proceed and begin looking for grants, if there's something to pay for something like that. So would you think about, think about that, not necessarily for tonight, but.
Facilities and. Facilities committee, that would be the one, I'm not sure, what, what subcommittee you want to?
To call a mission statement?
Yeah, to, to just work on this.
Personnel?
I'd be, yeah, probably.
New personnel?
I'd be personnel, yeah.
I told Adam he was done with meetings for personnel committee for the year.
I'm trying to give Bob. Give you a break, I'm trying to get.
Yeah, but he's on the outside.
I know, that's right. That's what I'm saying, when I thought about that. It's okay. Or you, you can punish me afterwards.
Certainly, it can be a, a meeting of the whole, if anyone would like.
Oh, yeah, obviously, it always is, obviously, you just need to initially. And, and we're trying to set something up in this.
Personnel committee has had a run, good luck.
Yes, we have.
We're at a roll.
Speaking of that, all right, very good, then we'll move on with the thought that this will be placed on, I'm sorry, let's go back to one step. Is there a consensus for the number of people so we can begin soliciting or sending out?
I think you need, I think you need to put a mission statement together first. So they know what they're getting into.
I understand that.
May I suggest that we're thinking of a minimum of five, a maximum of seven.
That I agree with.
Yes.
I don't think any less than five is workable, because.
Right.
Three becomes.
It's.
Somebody's missing.
I agree.
Okay, very good, so we'll think of between five and seven and we'll work on a final number at, at the next time we get together. And the personnel committee, shall we? Oh, we can't wait. Thank you very much for that, new business, seven A, consider an act on pay raises for non-union staff.
Since we didn't pass a budget, would you like to table that for a future meeting?
I would, I would move that we do that. Becomes, it becomes an issue and in the past, we, we have had to do that, so. It becomes, it becomes an issue and in the past, we we have had to do that, so. I I would move that we state, we table that for a future meeting. Following an approval of our budget.
Since we're on that topic, I'd like to bring up something that. I mentioned at the Fire Department Office meeting on Sunday night and. Fire Department has always been willing to put people out for Farm Day and Race and the. Anything else that goes on, anything that's on in town, they're they're willing to supply personnel and people are willing to come out. As volunteers for every charitable event we have in town in one shape or form. We have something coming up next week, the Strawberry Festival, which is a for-profit event. It's not charitable in any way, shape or form, and I don't personally.
Where is that?
That's a fish farm on the seventeenth and eighteenth. And I personally don't believe that it's fair to ask people to give up their own time so that someone else can make money. And I think that anytime, we don't have. But I think anytime that we are involved in a for-profit event such as the Strawberry Fest. The chief should be contacted, asked how many people you would like to have there for the event, and I think they should be paid. While they're there, I'm not asking, I'm not recommending it for any volunteer, any. Nonprofit thing like the one for the Farm Day that benefits the Lutz Museum or. Any other host of things that they do, but anytime there's an individual making a profit on an event. I believe it's fair to ask personnel to be there for free.
Are they being asked for, say, public safety reasons?
Yes, you know, to be there, the the fire department is the first responder EMS for the town. They'll probably be an ambulance there, but the ambulance is there only to transport. You know, there's probably gonna be ten thousand or more people for this thing on Friday and Saturday. And people that'll be up there from the fire department are there to do EMS and and keep an eye on things for fire safety in addition to the fire marshal and. You know, it it just doesn't seem fair to me that we're asking somebody to give up their time for free when somebody else is making a profit.
Did we address that at all when we did the change in the fee schedule?
No, and and that's what prompted me to to begin to think about it. Because, you know, we talked about the fee schedule for profit.
But we and we and we changed the fee schedule.
Right. And and I believe, you know, like I just said, if if we're doing it for a charitable organization. You know, I'll put my hand up and I'll be there, but don't ask me to do it if I'm doing it so somebody else can make a profit off the event.
Well, sir, do we, do we have any, I mean, I'm assuming we have a trooper there or somebody.
So so there's, they're actually, based on our Unified Command um meeting, we require that they have four state troopers. So when we require that they have four state troopers, the state police also required that they have a sergeant.
The chief would like to address it on something.
But he's making sure I remember the number.
That's the number five, four plus one, five.
In most towns.
Sorry.
They pay directly for that.
They pay a private duty rate for that, just as if you are having them direct traffic or at a construction site. So do we have an ordinance for that, something similar when?
So we have.
Public safety.
We have two ordinances that are important here, one of which is the ordinance that allows the Board of Selectmen to set the fees. The other ordinance is uh, I and I may have the title wrong, but it's a major event uh ordinance. Which kicks in when there is a gathering of, I think, five hundred or more. And so on, under that, we require that they actually get a permit from the town. Uh, for these events that are held that are anticipating five hundred or more individuals. And last year, based on this strawberry fest that cost the town a bunch of money, I suggested to the Board of Selectmen that. We make some changes to the fee structure.
Right.
And, you know, so so we did that, and that new fee structure. But I I thought we put something in there that they might be required to make a donation to the fire.
Well, I I don't remember anything like that, but.
I'll have to go back and look at.
But I I'm speaking specifically to the personnel that are up there.
Does the fire department, I mean, is there a stipend for call hours or?
Yeah, there's, there's.
For that, for that, there is not.
Isn't there, because they're basically doing that, it's not really any different.
In that case, then the town, town would be subsidizing the for-profit.
Well, except that through the permit structure, pass that.
We can, we can pass it through, so I think we should look at that.
We can give them credit for calls so that they get their stipend money and then the town collects it.
You know, let's say collect a half a day there.
It 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 really should be a part of our 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 permit fee process. And for us, and and we have time to do it, we can't do it this year, but next year, I think it's to come out. You have some idea of the number of personnel you need and come up with what would be a base fee structure for these. You know, I. You know, Tom collects it and then your Tom passes it forward.
And just as a, just as a point of information, I've asked uh through staff, I've asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at this. And to potentially enact some regulations that, put some control. In places like this can do these things, you know, and what size, we don't, we don't. We do have a seasonal, yeah, but. The town, the town, the town of Willington actually enacted, you know, value-added agribusiness type. Regulations and Mike D'Amato was the one that helped create those. Uh, I was leading the Planning and Zoning Commission for a little while and got that started, but he finished that. I think they have a pretty good set of regulations because you know what, I mean, where else could this happen? And, you know, what kind of stress and strain is that gonna potentially put on town services? I mean, so so, you know, on top of the fire department being there, um, you know. We've all met a couple of times and had discussions, um, you know, I'm gonna have. The Highway Department drop off barricades, we're gonna have to put cones in the street. You know, we're gonna have to, according to the Connecticut DOT permit, we need to have, you know, safety zone signs on either side. Of the temporary entrance.
Parks Department puts up no stop and no parking signs.
Signs along Dimmock Lane, so these, you know, and and even though they happen during regular business hours, these are all things that, you know. Added expense to the town.
Takes away from regular business hours.
Sort of address that as a. But with an ordinance that that creates a fee structure that's rational based on what we're.
Let's add that then to the next agenda, uh, because I think that's a a good thing to to bring forward another time and.
Excuse me, is there going to be another meeting with strawberry folk, strawberry, uh, what's his name, I forget the guy's name, uh, before that event, Jim?
Do you think we need one?
No, I'll enact Friday night if we have to, no problem.
You know where to find me, you've done it before.
I know where to find a guy who owns the place too, yeah, yep, okay, no problem.
Can I have one more minute under the business?
We have one more item to add.
Wait a minute, I, we still have a motion to, it hasn't been seconded, I want a motion forward to. To table the um, considering an act on pay raises for non-union staff.
So the motion is to table, has been made by Bob Moore, seconded by Adam Keller, and it is not debatable. At this point, I would ask for a vote then, on paper, say aye. All opposed? It passes, I, Bob DiPietro, I presume you're a yes? Very, very good, it is unanimous, thank you very much. Going on then to be, consider an act on the mill rate for motor vehicle tax and due date, because that was set by the. Legislature and the governor has signed it into law. Are there any questions regarding that?
So tax collector specifically requesting a motion to approve the date, due date of July first. And a motor vehicle mill rate cap at thirty-two point four six for motor vehicle bills. Which would allow her to move forward and at least be able to get those bills out for our residents.
Are there any discussion? Bob, Bob Moore has made the motion, do I have a second, Bob DiPietro? Thank you, as to further discussion. All right, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Okay, it passes unanimously, thank you.
So under new business, I'd like you to consider to add two quick items. Uh, one would be transfer authority for conducting transfers for the balance of the fiscal year not to exceed. Five thousand dollars in a quick discussion about a meeting I had today with a resident concerning Indian Notch Park.
So at this point, I would ask for a motion to open the agenda to add item C and D, C being Jim's Rupert's authority. Uh, to award uh money up to five thousand dollars and. Transfer, thank you.
Can we add one more?
We can, I could certainly entertain it. You wanted.
I need grant approval.
Then it would be E for grant approval for the fire department?
I have to get it, since there's matching funds, I have to get approval before I can submit the grant. It's not a biggie, but.
Then I would entertain a motion to add C, D, and E. Bob Moore and Mike Aramita seconded, is there any comment, comments on it? I'll ask for a a vote, all in favor, say aye. Namously to add them, we'll start with C, Jim, do you, is there any further discussion you'd like to add on your authority?
I I don't think so.
This, this has been done uh for decades.
Normally, it's done, it started at the beginning of May.
Right.
But since you guys, you know, have been meeting every two weeks with AP, and especially with a couple of new people on the board, I think it's great that you get to see. You know, transfer requests that come in.
Motion, we approve that.
I'll second that.
So, um, Mike Aramita motions. Uh, Bob Moore seconds, is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Very good, it passes unanimously. Uh, D, meeting.
Quick discussion on Indian Notch Park, as you all know, um. Based on the picture that I saw, you guys were all out on Memorial Day and Memorial Day weekend, and it was hot. And as you might imagine, Indian Notch Park, although not open, was quite busy.
Was the gate open?
The gate was not open, people were, people were parked along, um, you know, the the roadways there. Not on Talon Road, on the on the, on the side roads and um. You know, creates some difficulties for the neighborhood, they've asked that I take a look at. You know, where some of the, you know, boulders and no parking signs are placed and maybe we can make some adjustments there so that if. It gets out of control and state police are called, you know, they they have some ability to enforce that. The other issue they're finding is that um. Trash can accumulate when people go there, um, and I know that in the past, our our troopers have. Actually, you know, told people to leave or, you know, face a ticket for trespass. And we've asked our resident state troopers to keep an eye on that this time of year. The the other issue that they brought up is when people are using the park and they're using the park um while it's closed. They're also using the bathroom in the park, uh, which is typically the wood line. And um, it's not just urination and that creates quite a mess in the park. Yeah, and they, you know, they thought maybe one of the things that the selectmen should consider. Is to, you know, put a portal in the park so if people are there. Uh, even though they may be there without permission and the park is closed, at least there's an opportunity for sanitation without. Going into the wood line.
Do you have an idea how much that would cost you?
Um, I I think it's around a a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
For a, for a single?
Yes.
And you have a location in mind?
The park is large enough, I I mean, probably somewhere in proximity to the existing um. Bathrooms.
And are you thinking for ten months out of the year?
No, I I mean, I think, you know, look, when the park is open, I I mean, I think, yeah, I think probably beginning before Memorial Day. And ending shortly after Labor Day would be appropriate, I I mean, I don't know.
I'm sorry, beginning Memorial Day? Labor Day and continuing through to.
We don't need it in the wintertime.
Oh, I would just. There are people down there all the time walking their dogs, all the time.
The people who are walking their dogs are usually close to home, yeah.
No, cars pull right in, two cars at a time.
Well, I mean, if if that's the case, then I would say probably should be year round, you know, and only because, you know. First of all, I'd say we should have the discussion of whether or not that promotes use when the park is closed. Or are we just solving a sanitation issue?
So I would say we solve sanitation issue because we have people that walk in also from around the perimeter. And they walk around and they walk, walk the beach, whatever, but we have a lot of dog walkers that are using it. And I will say they may be close to home, but sometimes they're not close enough to home.
Okay.
So, um.
The dogs use what a lot?
So, um, uh, having said all that, um. I would entertain other discussion, is there a a an interest in at a hundred? Of having Jim do further investigation on it or actually making movement on it?
If we may, I I I would suggest initially, we we contract it for at least a minimum of three months and then. We'll figure out where our, where our funding is gonna be for.
See if it makes things better.
See if it works.
Is there a further discussion?
If that's a question. Question, what is, uh, first of all, I understand last Saturday or Sunday, the beach was packed. We had a fire over there, Linwood, Linwood uh, drive the other night, nine o'clock, and the cars were double parked on Talon Road around the exit. What is the town's liability if somebody gets hurt in there when the park's closed and they get stuck in a toilet?
Use at your own risk.
The park is closed, there's no trespassing signs up.
Right.
And there's no liability to us, even if.
The porta potty is there for the town's maintenance workers.
Yes, thank you.
Not for trespass. Just happens that they can.
Overflow, as you can call it, during the week.
There we go.
But that sort of begs the question of kind of enforcement, are we moving on the street there? Every year.
And and we've had, you know, we've had. When it gets, we've gone in there and had two of them go out there and just ticket the street.
Well, we've also had um, our resident state trooper who was off on AT, uh, no, uh, FT, no. You're off, you're on, you're on training last weekend.
Yes.
So we did not have.
An issue last weekend?
Uh, Indian Notch Park.
What you had talked about with.
I sent Dan an email, yeah, I mean, it was, it was hot, I mean, there was a lot of, uh, a lot of people there. Have you met everybody here?
We'll just, we'll just add uh to the um, minutes that we've been joined by resident state trooper Jake Missier.
So, so the the park had a lot of use over the weekend, so was unauthorized, right, the park is is closed currently. Scheduled to open later on in the month if we can pass a budget, which we didn't. And so, you know, we've talked about in the, in the past, you know, uh, our resident troopers have made, you know. Rounds there just to see if there's parking violations on the street and whether or not we have trespassers in the park. They've been asked to leave, um, but one of the things that residents are experiencing or finding because they. They do apparently use the park to walk their dogs and things, um, when the park is not necessarily open. Is that because the bathrooms are not open, people are unfortunately defecating. Along the wood line and it it just really is a sanitation issue. And so they've asked the Board of Selectmen to consider placing a a. And so, they've asked the board of selectmen to consider placing a porta potty there so that when people use the park, and we don't have enforcement around, and they're in there, there's an opportunity for them to have appropriate sanitation and not be using the wood. So, that was what we were discussing.
Can I just bring up the fact that last week, we also got a call from a citizen about Bolton Notch State Park, where there is a port-alet, and people had knocked it over, and we had to call in DEEP because that is their responsibility for that park. So, we have no trespassing signs for a reason, but we're still letting people walk through there, we're still letting people be on the beach there because nobody else is reporting it, but we're constantly getting calls, probably at least two to three times a week now, that people are over there, they're swimming, they're partying, and doing whatever.
And coming across them the boat, the boat launch.
Launch area.
Yeah, they're ju- uh, that's the other thing, they're jumping off the dam. Apparently, there's a bunch of teens hanging out, jumping off the dam and partying over there, but this is what we run into every year.
And, and uh, and, and generally, quote, that, the park, that's supposed to be maintained by the, the, the state's deep personnel.
Right, because the dam is state property.
Yeah, and, and that whole part, and, and as is that whole parking area.
Let's circle that.
Yeah.
And there's, there's also apparently a path from the, behind the church that they can follow to get into the park.
And that's, yeah.
We, you probably don't know about that yet.
So, they've been parking at the church and to go
Yeah. Yeah, St. George's.
And um, at one time, when uh in, in the past, when DEP had their own enforcement personnel, we, you know, we had this issue, and we pushed, pushed it, they, they patrol it a little more, but I, they don't have, they don't have, they don't have enough people, obviously, I don't think they do anymore, I'm sure.
They're, they're just as low as we are, they're better, a lot lower, actually.
Well, that's, that's the point.
They've had a lot of retirees.
Yeah, and, and I, I, so, I don't think we're gonna get any relief from the state on that one, so really, we're stuck.
No, we can ask.
Oh, I, I would, I would request
Two incredible resident state troopers to uh, um, increase the patrol of the area. Do you have, do they have keys to get into?
I assume they do, yes.
Yes.
So, that's something to make, to add to your key.
I, I have a that key ring filled with keys, so I have to look at, double check one, and uh, I'm sure that key is on there.
Very good.
We did find a very effective thing is when we had a German checker going through there. It, it's kind of like when they saw that dog. That was it.
Yeah.
Well, if you want to ask for friends to go with you.
If I had one, I'd loan them to you.
We're just as low and on patrol.
Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
So
Very good. Uh, so, then, um, do you have enough? Oh, so, we have a motion on the table for three months.
To For three months, and, and then
To have a porta, portalet?
Yeah, and then
With maintenance.
Yep, and then we'll make a decision what to do after that. Um, we probably should we, we can't make a decision tonight on, 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 on the parking.
I, I haven't had a chance to investigate it.
To really look at it.
The meeting was only at one o'clock today.
Quite frankly, I think right now, if we leave it with, you know, give the administrative officer and our residents a chance to look into it and, and, and move in a direction that you think that can ease the problem, you know, without us having to to act, us, the board, having to act on it any further, and just be able to deal with, with, with the signs we have and, and, and the policies we have in place. But, I'm gonna say, this is all just happened, and uh, you know, give Jim and
Would you re-sign it?
And the residents a chance to
Yeah, we, we, we need to take a look at it.
Take a look at it.
I gotta take, I gotta go down Vernon Road and take a look at that situation there, and then
There are already no parking signs there.
I think there's, I think there's some on one side, problem is, it's just a wide right away there between the edge of the street and the, and the stone wall.
And the, the apron to go into.
And they're right, they're parking on the aprons of both entrances.
Yeah, and they, and down on the, the tend to park down, the no parking area for the fire lane that's on the end of Plymouth.
And Lynwood.
So, they do that too. Okay, so, we have a motion before us, is there any further discussion for a three-month rental? Uh, of a question, uh, for the vote then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, Bob?
Aye.
I need a second for the motion, I only had Bobby for
Mike Aramita.
He raised his hand, I didn't call it, I
Thank you.
You didn't see him raise his hand?
We missed having you
I was too busy writing.
Um, so, we will, uh
I know, yeah.
Branded, branded, branded E.
Mike. Yep.
Uh, we have a request for grant approval for an application, and with matching grants, Mike?
Right, it's from the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection under the Division of Forestry for towns less than ten thousand people, and for volunteer fire departments, it's for equipment, training, uh, fire suppression control, but not for fire, uh, not for medical rescue or non-fire purchases. It's a small grant, it's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant, it's uh, it's, it's a five-thousand-dollar grant with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar match, so, we'd have to come up with twenty-five-hundred, they give us twenty-five-hundred, it's not a big grant, but it's take anything somebody
It all helps.
Yeah, so, but I mean
Do you have, do you have a, uh, um, Mike, do you have a use for the money specifically?
Not specifically, but we can use it for equipment, anything to do with firefighting.
Oh, and training.
And training, uh, fire, or fire prevention, control, suppression, training, you know.
All those items, we have, we do have those items in budget.
Yes.
So, it does not have to happen in total, and any additional appropriations, you can use it within budget, because you have enough items to support that.
We could conceivably say that the items we're buying for regular purchases would be that half, and the other stuff we ask for could be the other half, so, yeah, we could, we could make that up out of operating funds way, by just buying stuff that we would normally buy.
Chief, do you want
It's a little
Well, let, let me clarify something, we do not buy stuff willy-nilly. Purpose is, there's actual purposes, the use
That is not, that's not going to be on this, on the, in the minutes.
There are actual purposes and reasons for the tools to use to protect the citizens of Bolton. So, yes, with that, Michael, I agree with you. Thank you, Kathy, thank you, Kathy.
That was up in the mid, Kathy.
What was that, willy-nilly?
No, no, he's not, he's not here at the meeting.
That was Willy Wonka.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, here we go, getting in trouble, chocolate factory and all, so, um, is there any further discussion if they are, if there's no additional funds required to, for the fire department to apply for the grant for twenty for five thousand dollars with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar match?
Mm-hmm. You do, did you make the motion?
I didn't make the motion, I was just bringing it up, I'll make the motion if you want.
I think we have to do, to
Mike Aramita makes the motion, I need a second?
Sure.
Bob Moore seconds, saying further discussion? Bob DePietro, do you have anything to add?
For the season do you have to spend, and you have to spend all?
Yes. Yeah.
No, Bob.
You could spend it all. Oh, yeah, I, I could spend that money without even raising a sweat in about five minutes.
Bob Moore's On budget, um, or something like that, so
He said, okay.
Okay, very good, then I will, if there's no further questions, I will call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Going on then, thank you, Mike, good luck. Uh, eight, COVID report, uh, you've been following it in the news, um, there is no recommendation for us to take action right now, uh, there is quite a bit uh of COVID running around, it appears, it still appears to be Omicron, and um, the hospitalizations are still lower, but there is a high infection rate, and it's hard to report, uh, we're finding, certainly because of the home testing and people are staying home because they're not terribly sick, they're just have cold-like symptoms, or they're showing those symptoms at all.
To report?
Well, if they're doing the home
No, no, I, I, no, I was gonna say that the, the Regional Health District report only showed three people for last week.
Yes.
Yeah, we're doing better.
But that's
Much better.
But that's all home tests, we're not
Because nobody's getting sick when they hear. The rest of us just get, you know, going
Very good, so there's no action required?
Yeah.
We're gonna move on then to administrator's monthly report, uh, officer's report, and he has given you a list of about twenty items, though, I hope you've read them all, uh, Jim, would you like to highlight?
I'll just highlight a couple, you know, we're gonna get an additional appropriation of fourteen thousand dollars from FEMA for the storm response for ICEs, because they had a vote to increase the, uh, the cost share from seventy percent to ninety percent. We got a notification last week that we're gonna get an additional fourteen thousand dollars, which is extraordinary. Um, you know, we, we have several positions posted in newspaper and other sources, you know, we need to replace Gary, we need to replace the crewman three position. Uh, you know, we're still looking for summer help, you know, we have some shortages in a couple of departments. Um, the one that's gonna see the longest shortage, it appears, is probably our Buildings and Grounds Department, we have an individual who's gonna be out for a significant period of time, uh, so we're trying to get some temporary help in that department. Um, so, we are, we're, we're short-staffed at the moment. Um, and I, I will say that, you know, the negative part of that is, you know, we're not getting as much done as we'd like to, but the other thing is, um, you know, it, it means that we'll have some money left at the end of the year, and it's one of those things that, you know, when we come to budget time next year, they're gonna say, well, you gave back money, you know, why should we increase your budget next year? So, you know, we'll have to be mindful of that and be able to explain that, you know, again, you know, why there, there may be some funds, uh, the other, the other thing that's not something that we normally see is we had a unified command meeting for the statewide drill. Um, our first selectman participated um in the statewide emergency preparedness drill that we held earlier this month, um, which is a grant deliverable. It's one of the things that we have to do in order to be able to receive our EMPG grant funds. Uh, the other thing is, I have a meeting scheduled between the town engineer and Hemlock Constructions engineer um, to discuss the concerns regarding the bridge at uh Mark Anthony Lane, and I know, I think, Adam, this was a question you had at one point in time about second trash cans invoices for every second trash can in town have been sent out, that's an annual bill, and those have been sent out.
How much is it?
Kathy, how much is it?
A renewal of a second trash can is a hundred and eighty dollars, and I will just say that the list has increased, um, I can't tell you how many are on the list, but it used to be like, I wanna say fifteen. I gotta say, we're probably up to forty, if not more, right now.
Does that money begin to, even begin to cover the trash from the second can?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we know the answer to that question.
No, that, that small amount is really hard to determine. It's, that, that is a small
When, when it's small in there
Two hundred pounds, or it could be fifty pounds.
It's small and it's fifteen, but it gets significant when it gets increased number.
Yeah.
We're paying for it, son.
Yeah.
Yeah. Were there, were there any other questions on the report, I know I just kinda skimmed through some of the super highlights. And then the next thing would be the low SIP grant and the connectivity grant. Uh, we discussed earlier that the low SIP grant we've applied for, we, we have, you know, every reason to think that it is likely going to be accepted, you know, it had a kind of a pre-review process uh, where they, you know, conceptually approved it. Um, and so, we hope to hear from them at some point that that grant has been approved, at which time, I imagine we'll go through the same process we did with the connectivity grant, which would be to have, you know, public informational meetings to share with the public, get feedback on any concerns or questions they may have, and be able to work on addressing those. Uh, which brings us to the next thing on the list, which is the connectivity grant. Um, we held our second public informational meeting, and that's the section of the trailer goes from Town Hall down to Notch Road. Um, we had really good, I would say, I think we had good communication, and, you know, I think we were able to address, you know, all of the valid concerns that were brought before us, and the most pressing of which was, you know, protection of existing trees, we, we've engaged with somebody from Bartlett Tree Service that that is their specialty, is to preserve trees during the construction process. Um, they're, they've offered us a contract for something around thirty-five-hundred dollars. In the grand scheme of things, that's not a lot of money, so if that is what it takes in order to be able to move this thing to construction, that would be great. So, the town engineer is working on, uh, doing final edits to the plan, at which time, we've got to get it approved by, uh, ConDOT and get the funds allocated. Um, they have preserved the funds for us, and uh, once we have um that commitment and the funds, we will begin to order long lead-time items, and it's gonna take, uh, such as some of the culvert materials, may take some time to get in. Uh, and then we'll, you know, then we'll move into construction with public notice before we move into construction. And then I guess under other, you know, you've probably all seen the signs or the postings or the, uh, the Bolton Bulletin, where we've got some, uh, some road reclaiming and paving that's gonna be happening here at the end of the month. Um, that is excellent, that we're gonna be able to get that done. Um, we could also report that, uh, the highway foreman has been released to come back to work as of June twentieth without
Twentieth.
June twentieth without restriction, so, he will be here for the paving portion of those projects.
Very good, does that sort of cover A and B, Jim?
Yes, and C, unless somebody wants me to talk about something else.
Welcome to adjourn.
No.
Hold on, hold on.
You got an AP approval with it. Don't we?
It's not on
Oh, yes, we do.
But it's in the
We should, yeah, it's in the back, yes.
Do it under
So, we, we need to, all right, let's do it under, thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
You saved us another meeting.
Yep. I saved me another meeting. I don't
Oh, God.
More importantly, you saved me from having to call all of you.
Um, uh, this is money to and do it twice a month.
I take it your motions were drunk?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, uh, for the chair, for the chair.
Then you did.
Would you like to make a motion, Adam?
Everybody have the AP?
Yes, right in front.
I moved that we approved the AP.
Bob Moore second, uh, Bob, Bob DePietro.
Bob DePietro, I think beat him to it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there, is there further discussion on, are any of the items on AP?
Could I just ask a question, we're paying, there, there's a indication that we're paying for a, um, the director of a water system on Notch Road, okay, that's the school, right?
It's, it's a combination of the school, the Notch Road Municipal Center, the town garage, and so, the statute, statute actually requires that we have
Right.
A certified water operator.
Yeah, more than thirty people on a well.
Yeah, I used to be one years ago, but I left that certification.
When the, uh, when the Montessori school had to set one up, we had to get our director certified the classes to three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then another two or three to do the initial testing.
When I was a facilities manager, I, I had that certification, but it's all gone.
Then, as, and for the questions, then I will ask for a motion, uh, ask for the, call for the vote on the AP, all in favor say aye.
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 It passes unanimously, I just have one other further item, I have asked Jim to, uh, bring forward a um, uh, a document for his professional review, so the board can review his, um, performance, performance review, because we have to look at his, um, long-term contract, and uh, cause he's cause he's, he's still considered temporary status?
Still interim, yeah.
Interim, so, uh, he will be bring forward for all of us to, um, uh, review his performance and then have him, um, reflect back on it. Um, Adam, that's the type of thing we would do as personnel in executive session.
Well, I would think you'd want the whole board to participate.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Correct.
You would distribute it individually, and then we would respond.
Right.
And then, I guess the personnel committee has to meet and discuss it.
Personnel, okay. Very good, so we, we have a bit of a plan, thank you all, uh, now I'll entertain a motion, uh, excuse me, uh, we have a guest with us this evening, uh, trooper, is there anything you would like to address the board on?
No, I'll just keep on enforcing some more vehicle complaints that we get around town, South Road, Eberon, and some down on the movements, but other than that.
Oh, good.
We're looking all right.
Thank you. Then I would, I'd say a motion.
Sure.
I'll say. We have Mike Aramita, Bob Morris, seven, all in favor say aye.